Variance like number of years and things.
Do have a bid bond.
Who is this your opening?
B and O.
B and O.
Okay, we have a twenty-four month. In the sum of seven hundred and fifty-one thousand, two hundred and forty-eight dollars. Alternative B for thirty-six months. One million, one hundred and forty-nine thousand, five hundred and fifty-seven dollars.
Would you please repeat that?
One million, one hundred and forty-nine dollars. One, one billion, one hundred and forty-nine thousand, five hundred and fifty-seven dollars. And the last alternate is a five-year, sixty-month. One million, nine hundred and ninety-four thousand, six hundred and nine dollars.
And that was what was that? Five years, five years.
I also have one from. Solid Waste Services doing business as JP Mascara and Sons. They found a place. Okay, twenty-four months. For solid waste disposal. One million. Eight thousand, six hundred dollars. Thirty-six months, it's one million, five hundred and twelve thousand, nine hundred dollars. Sixty months, it's two million, six hundred and sixty-three dollars. Two million, six hundred and sixty-three thousand, five hundred and eighty dollars.
If only it was two thousand, six hundred and sixty-three dollars.
And that is all for the trash removal contract.
Who gets that to review?
Uh, I'll give.
It goes to the solicitor for his review for our, we'll award it at our account, a regular council meeting on the fifteenth of October.
All right, next we have the snow removal contract, and again, I received two bids. This one is from ADU Services. Who is our current contract holder. They have an hourly rate, what we were looking for. One hundred and ninety-five dollars. Per hour.
Is that specified for a vehicle? I believe in the past they've had different rates for different vehicles that they use.
They probably are getting into that. Yes, they do. Alright, so this is um, twenty, twenty-five, twenty-six, one-year contract is one ninety-five an hour.
Ah, sorry, what was that length?
One hundred and ninety-five dollars an hour for one year. One hundred and ninety-five for two years. Actually, one ninety-five for three years.
Okay, easy.
They have years four and five is two twenty-five. So the five-year would be one through three is one ninety-five. Four and five would be two twenty-five. Um, when they use a six-wheeler dumpster larger. And that would be, for instance, if it snowed twenty-some inches and they had to scoop it and take it down to the swim glove is why we're bringing this up. One through three would be two twenty-five an hour. Four and five would be two fifty an hour. Bulk storage is stored at no cost in their yard.
That would be the salt, correct?
That is the salt.
So I just want to confirm I understood, so one, two or three years is one ninety-five per hour. If you're doing four years or five years, the rate goes up.
No, no, it's still one twenty-five for the first, one ninety-five for the first three. One five would be.
Gotcha.
Yep.
And the larger.
That's if we go with a five-year deal.
And the larger vehicles, two twenty-five for the first three years, and then four and five go to two fifty.
Okay, this one here is from Rockland Construction. Hourly rate. Twenty, twenty-five, twenty-six, one years, one fifteen an hour. For two years, it is still one fifteen. For three years, it is still one fifteen, and for five years, it is still one fifteen.
Wow. What about year four? Did they give us a four-year bid?
It's a five-year one. I just want to see if they gave us a price for. Larger vehicles. He's showing them so I know they have them. The only thing I would have to confirm with them. Is that they store the salt. Nope, okay, so they're one fifteen an hour.
They don't specify larger vehicles or.
Well, they have many here. They gave us a copy of all their vehicles, so they do have. I would just have to verify that they are. Uh, responsible to store the salt.
Do we know where they're currently plowing other municipalities? I believe you told me they're located in Clifton Heights, is that the group? Rockland is in Clifton?
I think that's where they are. I know they're local. Here's a list of their trucks, so they have some big vehicles as well.
Yeah, Clifton Heights, Pennsylvania.
Rockland right there.
We just opened your bid.
Joe?
Are you Rockland? Rockland guys?
Yeah.
Joe, you know, are you capable of storing um, sixty tons of rock salt?
Yeah.
Yes.
You don't charge for it, right? No, it's a truck, okay.
Not in the bid, it's not charged.
Right.
I'll answer that.
Okay, John.
Okay.
And you don't, another question that came up because the other bid had a different rate for the heavier vehicles, like if you had to use a dump truck to move the snow, we'd do same rate for that. Okay.
Okay.
So we have to relocate it because of. Twenty-four inches of snow, we're able to pick it and take it to the wind pump. Okay. Okay, so Rockland is one ninety, one fifteen.
Per hour.
Per hour. AU is one ninety-five per hour.
Right.
One through three, four and five are two twenty-five.
Got it.
Okay, I will give both of these to our solicitor to review, make sure everything is in order, and we will make a recommendation at our council meeting.
Okay. Thank you, gentlemen. It'll be on Wednesday, the fifteenth.
Yeah. When it will be.
Okay. Very good, uh, moving on.
Hold on. Yes.
Same for the trash?
Yeah, both of them, both of them, both of them will be awarded at the, our next council meeting. Thank you both very much for coming.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you for being here. Madam Secretary, I see no one has uh, signed up for public comments, so I'll move on to the next item. Uh, is there a motion to approve and accept the minutes of the previous council meeting as presented by the Borough Secretary? Mister Borders, is there a second to that motion? Councilwoman Kelly, sorry, I still. Uh, any questions? Seeing none, all those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Nice to have it. Uh, do we have any communications receipts?
No.
No, okay. Reports of the Borough Officers, Mayor Cheechee.
Thank you, Mister President. First, I just want to acknowledge that I'm wearing a hat indoors, and that's very unkosher, unorthodox, but I had a little. Something removed from my scalp, so I think it's in everyone's best interest if I represent the Alden Boosters today, buddy, right? So. No. That would be not good. We're getting stitches removed tomorrow, so at our next meeting, I'll look like a normal person again. Uh, second. And much more important, I want to acknowledge the birth of Kinsey Ray. And we love you, Debbie, and we love Kinsey Ray by extension, so we wanted to give you a little. A little set of flowers. Is that blocking any views?
That's, thank you, everyone.
Let me get a, I can give you a proper hug. Congratulations.
And this is your first grandchild, is that not correct?
Yeah.
I told you before, you're too young to be your grandmother.
Little girl, seven pounds.
Three ounces.
Three ounces and.
Healthy mom and mom, dad and baby are all good. How are grandpa and grandma?
Still trying to figure out what you call, but we had some.
Okay.
Right, now there's Nana and Pop Pop and Mum Mum and all the rest.
Thank you.
G-Mon, well, that's a cool one. That's like modern. Yeah, I know your G-Mon.
Congratulations.
You're welcome.
Yes, congrats.
Alright. So continuing right along, uh, just a quick update to everyone on our borough. Computer replacement, we've got seven computers uh, that need to be replaced. Ahead of the Microsoft deadline, uh, Microsoft is going to be um. What they call end-of-life support, they're no longer going to support Windows ten as of October the fifteenth. I believe the fourteenth is the last day they're supporting it.
So midnight, they turn.
Exactly.
Turns to dust.
Plus turns to dust. So the problem with that is that without Microsoft's ongoing support, which includes security patches, it could leave. Um, any computer that is still running Microsoft, excuse me, Windows ten, vulnerable, so we don't want that. Uh, so we are, we've been, we've already gotten the devices, we've gotten. Three laptops and four desktops. Um. And the debt, the laptops will be used by our chief, by our borough manager, and by our treasurer. And everyone else will have desktops. Um, they have already been dropped off with GoTo. Uh, tonight council's gonna be um, considering and voting on a, starting a new contract with our current. IT managed service provider, and um. I think frankly, it's uh, it's a, it's a very good opportunity for us to save some money. Um, we're going to be changing, we're currently in the middle of a thirty-six-month contract, and this will be. Making that one null and void, and a new thirty-six-month contract will start, and um. It will include computer setup, so that rate there will save us nine thousand dollars. So um, I do recommend council vote to approve that new contract. If anyone has any questions, I'm happy and ready to answer them. Um, assuming that council does approve it, does vote to approve it tonight, I will vote, I will sign the contract tomorrow. And so hopefully, we can have our new computer set up maybe by the end of next week. We're kind of coming down to the wire.
I, did you receive the email that I had sent back to you?
Did I receive, if, if, if you did today, I may not have seen it, yeah.
So, just two questions along with it, so looking at um, the numbers and the current contract. So, it was a rough estimate that there was a little over almost seven thousand dollars in savings, sixty-three ninety, I think, or sixty-nine thirty was.
Sixty-nine thirty.
Set up and everything. Uh, with the term, or with the new contract, there is a price of. Twenty-five ninety-five, two thousand five hundred and ninety-five dollars. What is that? For? Is that the new monthly rate?
Are you looking at my spreadsheet?
I am looking at the new quote that was sent.
Okay, just give me a minute, please.
That, if from the link of.
Yep. Scott Fulmer is our account executive, okay. So what page are you looking at?
The actual quote, is this?
I'm looking at the quote.
Okay, so the twenty-five, two thousand five hundred and ninety-five, that is the new monthly rate.
Correct.
Thirty-six months.
Okay.
Is that, is that what that is? Cause that's not listed in your spreadsheet.
To, right, I, I broke it down, so what I did was, as you can see up top. That, so two forty-five, so you see where it says quantity of four? Um, you know, probably we should have had this conversation if we were gonna get this much in the weeds ahead of tonight, but. Yeah, so if you go back to my spreadsheet, which I think you also have, hopefully, um, a copy of that, and you go to. Um, each, actually scroll down, Scott, scroll down to. If you look down to the very bottom of the last page, you can see the rates that I used to come up with. The spreadsheet that I, that, you know. Um, so you're, so the two forty-five, so for that four, that would be the base amount. If it were not discounted, okay? So in the first year, it's not gonna be two forty-five, it's gonna be one eighty-five, the second year is gonna be one ninety-five, and the third year will be two oh five. Okay? So, this.
The two forty-five was their base rate?
Yeah, I, I shared with you the spreadsheet so that you could kind of, if you needed to, get into the weeds and look at, you know, the formulas and how things were calculated.
That's what I did.
Okay.
So that's kind of where I'm, I just wanted to make sure because you're year one.
So let's look at year one. And we're looking at year one new contract, it's one eighty-five times twelve times B three, B three is the count.
Yes, right, all, all of the totals line up.
Okay.
So the contract itself would be thirty thousand, three hundred dollars for year one, all of that makes sense.
Okay.
Okay. So, if you break that down. Five by twelve is twenty-five, two thousand five hundred and twenty-five, the quote. Is two thousand five hundred and ninety-five.
Okay.
For per month, so there's a seventy-dollar difference. Just FYI.
Okay.
Year two and three, kind of the same thing follows suit.
Oh, you know what, seventy-five dollar difference?
Seventy dollars.
Okay, I don't know why it's seventy, but, but it's probably because we're getting rid of the server, we're not gonna have, as you can see, there's listed there. Um, I don't know why it's listing two servers, but that would.
What's the rate for the server?
Clear, this is not like, when, if we, when we sign this contract, it's not going to bind us to these numbers. If we hire new people, you know, obviously it will increase, right, and so the police server is gonna go away.
The point you're making is that we need to review these numbers because there's some. Point discrepancies possibly, I, I know, this is.
When did I send this to the council? Let's see this, cause that's a, I'm all about transparency, and. I think I shared it with you guys several days ago, maybe even last week.
The twenty-fifth, and guess.
Twenty-fifth, okay.
To finally fix my email.
Okay, I'm glad they did, so that was.
Didn't have access to this.
Okay, well, they're a phone call away, Scott, what can I tell you? Yeah.
And I also want to point out, just for council's transparency, if you look at the bottom of the contract. Because of what the dealings we've had with those in the past, they say one thing and then there's another charge, never seems to be the same number. There is uh, an onboarding cost. And uh, offboarding, say, in January, we have new council members that come in, offboarding is free, there's an onboarding cost of. Whoever would come in, okay, in the contract, it specifically states our names, so anybody new would have this onboarding fee. If there are two borough uh, council people that come in, that's five, that's a thousand dollars. A potential borough manager, it's another five hundred dollars, so there's an additional fifteen hundred dollars that we have to consider as well. I just want to point out that the contract has a certain number in here, but there's always going to have that potential that there's always more. Add-ons that we don't see, and that seems to be a pattern you have got to, I'm just calling that out.
All of those additions for any new council members would apply to the current contract as well.
But it has our names tied to it, and if you look at the fine print.
I don't know that that's the case, Scott, I, I can find that out, I mean.
I'm just.
Again.
For the, the council, you can do your research.
Okay, well, I mean, yeah.
What was for your, my week, right? We kind of compensated for this when we went higher.
Correct, so as.
That's why I'm asking.
Our borough manager is pointing out, so the, the current contract, as my numbers uh, bear out, came to a hundred and one thousand. Three hundred and forty dollars. The existing contract, which includes the six thousand, nine hundred and thirty-dollar PC setup. Comes to one hundred and eleven thousand, three hundred and seventy dollars. Obviously, the difference between those is about nine percent. And um, I think what we put on the agenda is approving, authorizing. An amount that does not exceed one hundred and twenty thousand, is that what you came up with?
Right.
So I mean, it will, um, and uh. I, I certainly don't have any specific loyalty to go to, at the same time, I don't necessarily agree with the allegation that they're always switching numbers around. I think things can be complicated, um, and you know, it's, I think they are operating in very good faith. I think they're a very solid and professional company, and I just want to state that on the record, I don't think that in any way we should.
Point, I'm not.
Okay.
Using or saying anything.
Well, you were saying they're always changing their numbers, so.
That seems good to me.
Could you do me a favor, go back to the servers, and what is that number?
Just bringing it to the council.
I think that those charges, if we had new people come in, was gonna be those same charges anyway. When people come in, so that, that's, that's apples, that's a wash. How much for the server?
Seventy-five bucks. Yeah, I don't know why they have two, I'll have to ask them.
It, it looks like the discrepancy, Scott, is that they have in the bid to support the server. Which we're once, we're chief, we're all in the cloud now, right, with your department?
Yeah, the, yes, we're, we're currently operating in the cloud, we still have the server because the data migration is still taking place.
They haven't finished the migration.
We have not finished the migration yet, we're in the final phases of that, so.
Let me ask this question, will. When we switch over on the fifteenth or the tenth or whenever, is the server offline only for migration?
The server was still under the contract.
Is it removed from the application other than migration of data?
Uh, you're asking for security reasons.
Yeah, I mean.
Yeah, I mean, I guess it is, I mean, I don't know. We should find that out, yeah, it shouldn't be connected.
Have you gotten a date for the data migration?
So they're in the process now, uh, they're also doing something in conjunction with GoTo. Um, or I believe that should have been done this past week. Or last week, uh, a second backup they were requesting. Um, I know that they had been talking with GoTo. The reference saw that, so once that's done, um. You're looking at about three weeks.
What don't you? It's a good point, you know, uh, this is an old server, I'm sure it has some ancient windows on it. Um, so, can we see if there's any possibility it could happen? Um, or, you know, I guess it can't be taken offline, cause it's, they're migrating the data from the server to their servers, to the cloud. So just if you.
Could it be a dead, not being a computer guy, could it be a dedicated link only to the people that are doing that work?
It's on the internet.
Okay.
Yeah. I mean.
I'm sure it's encrypted.
Well, I'm sure that the, the uploading of the data is encrypted, but the, the concern would be. Um. You know, and this is something maybe I could talk to GoTo to find out how much of a concern, maybe, maybe we're overthinking it, but it doesn't sound like it would, would be. You see what I'm saying? Yeah, yeah, so. I'll try to follow up tomorrow and see, let me find that.
So my understanding is the numbers are essentially apples to apples, um. And both of the contracts would decrease by seventy-five dollars a month once the server is gone, which we hope was gonna be by now, but. They haven't finished the data migration yet, so it should be by November. It's gonna be gone.
Right.
So, yeah.
That's right.
I would, I would think that that's probably.
And it's, we need a security, make sure that it's, whatever we need to do to make sure it's secure while it's still operational and while they're doing it, so.
Does anyone else have questions about this GoTo stuff? Cause you, obviously, you're gonna be.
You'll just follow up about if, if someone else comes on, is, is there gonna be additional fee?
I will definitely answer, I will, I will let you know that, but unfortunately, that can't happen tomorrow, after you vote.
But we do have a cushion in here.
Right.
For offloading and stuff like that, that's why we went to one twenty, just in case any of that, we did have a little.
The only reason I'm saying is we're in a budget crisis, so that we know.
Yeah, we're having a budget.
So, one last comment with, since we're talking about it, in the email, I also noted that. For our original contract, there's a penetration test, uh, that is.
And that was done.
That was done.
Right.
Did we get the report back from that?
Yep.
Okay. Are there critical on highs?
Um, it's been probably a year since I looked at it, I can share it with you.
Okay.
I don't remember.
Okay, just because that's an additional cost if we want to remediate any of those criticals and highs, it's not listed in the.
Oh, that's a good point.
So I just wanted, again, to point that out.
Well, if they would have done it, they should have brought us to our attention.
And I would think at this point, so I'll look, that's a good, that's a very good point, very good point.
Okay.
Thank you, Scott.
Check, uh, penetration test.
You might note originally it was our intention to make it to the end of the year.
Okay.
And switch over next year, and unfortunately. Microsoft, or actually, it was the siege's people, right? We're not allowing to use temporary patches, so we had to, we had to migrate, and the computer purchase was already in the budget for five thousand dollars. And we spent like forty-eight hundred?
Forty-eight ninety-one.
Right, so it was already authorized to buy them, it was just a question of, could we keep it under five, which, um, thanks to the mayor and John, they were able to do.
Um, this is just a side question, you did say the Civil Service Commission is next Thursday.
The next Wednesday.
Next Wednesday?
The eighth.
At seven thirty?
Seven thirty, yes, we'll get into that when we get around to that later.
I just wanna, I'm writing myself notes. Okay.
Any other, uh, any other question about the mayors, we'll be bringing this up for a vote later on in the meeting.
Right, uh.
And of course, it's gonna be contingent on our solicitor's approval.
Correct, and, and our solicitor. Um. I, I forwarded him the current contract and the previous contract, and um. Apparently, I didn't look close enough at the new contract, because the new contract doesn't contain, you know, I just took his word, which is, it's the same terms and conditions. He said in his email, and then in the new contract, there's no terms and conditions, as there was in the original contract, there was a whole, I don't know, ten pages of terms and conditions. So, um, uh, Mister Cole is gonna tell me what, that we're going to tell them that we want that.
I'm going to review them.
Yes.
And then we'll, uh.
You're gonna tell me your advice.
Yes. If they're the same, and my office has looked at it before, I, I can't imagine I'm gonna have all that much to.
Yep.
Say about it, but.
Will, we, we could still sign tomorrow, potentially, correct?
Potentially, yes.
Okay, good. Okay, borough, okay, anything else on the IT management? Okay, borough management replacement process, we're about to start crying when we think about it, but I'm trying to be stoic. Uh, John White, I'm sorry to say, is going to be retiring, I'm happy for John, but I'm unhappy for, for us. It's, he's been a very excellent borough manager, a real gift to our borough, and we thank you. And we're gonna give you all sorts of tributes at some point, but not tonight, and not tonight. Not tonight, yeah, do you want, do you want to build us? To add to your collection. Uh, okay, um, okay, so I just want to be transparent about the process. In consultation with Council President Procopio, Council Vice President Lambert, and Councilwoman Smythe, I drafted a job posting. And posted it on four locations last Wednesday, September twenty-fourth. The Pennsylvania Association of Boroughs, Pennsylvania Municipal League, Local Government Academy, and the. The Pennsylvania Association of Burrows, Pennsylvania Municipal League, Local Government Academy, and the Alden Borough website. Um, John, have you received invoices yet from either of the first two? Pennsylvania Association of Burrows or the Pennsylvania Municipal League?
I have not, and I'm on a lookout because.
Look out, yeah, cuz, yeah, okay, thank you. I think that the local government academy, which I think was your little pointing, was free, so.
There, it's an interesting, the side note, they are located out, out in Allegheny County. I didn't see any. Any listings for anybody east of Harrisburg when I scanned the site, thanks to your, but they they said that they would post it, so I said, why not? You know, somebody might wanna move from out there to Philadelphia. And there you go.
I posted it also, I I I posted kind of a reference to it on our borough Facebook page. And I sent out an email blast.
And an alert. I think I got both.
Yeah.
Yeah, I got a text alert and.
Oh, you got a text alert which contained a typo. According to Councilman uh Lambert, let me know, alas, after she got the text. That's how it works. How else would you know? Okay, so um, those went out also on Wednesday. We've so far received five resumes. Uh, please let anyone know, anyone at home, Mr. D'Amico. Ms. Kostick, if you know anyone, Joelle, anyone, if you know anyone, you know, please spread the word. Um, this, our application deadline is October seventeenth. Okay, moving right along.
Let me add one other thing. We had six residents that had expressed interest earlier. And the mayor emailed them.
Go out to all of them.
Individually.
Individually.
When the, when it got posted. So those individuals are aware. I don't know if any of them, I think one of them.
We've gotten one response so far, from that group, that elite group.
Yeah.
Um, these are residents. So, you know, that's obviously a good thing for people who are already have a vested interest in the borough. Um, we're, uh, okay, so we've had a a number of people, a Ms. Duckett and a Mr. Pickford, uh, raised concerns about Magnolia and Clinton. As we know, it's unfortunately a site in which we have a disproportionate number of vehicle accidents. Um, and Mr. Pickford went to the state senator's office and we heard from the state senator's chief of staff, Sarah McCullough. That we can uh submit a request for a traffic study. And I believe the borough manager stated that we've already had it done. Was it you?
When the stop sign went in.
Probably so, it was Mike's able to time, but I'm hoping Heather Boyd still has.
Okay.
Access to that. And that wasn't that long ago.
So the question would be, I mean, what else could they do other than stick a light in there?
Five years, yeah, here.
Five years, so it would have been.
I think, I think it went in for just prior to us, I mean, so it would have been twenty nineteen probably is when the study was done, or twenty eighteen.
But the stop signs went in in twenty-one, twenty-two?
Yes.
It's Joyce and I were down there with Mike.
The um.
Probably twenty-two.
Well, and as everyone at this table knows, cuz I've said it a hundred times, I said it in my email to Sarah McCullough. It took thirty years to get that stop sign. The borough had been pleading with Penn Dot for years, then thanks to our former state rep, Mr. Zabel, he was able to push it through. And I'll ask the chief. My recollection was the number of accidents has declined pretty significantly with the stop sign there. And there's a question about speeding. But it's my understanding that you can't put a speed bump on a state highway. And, you know, it's not our street. It's in our borough, but it's not our street.
Clifton Avenue.
Oh, great. Clifton Avenue is a state highway. It is a long stretch from Providence to Magnolia and from Magnolia to the stoplight in in the, in Collingdale. But my understanding is they're talking about speeding. I don't know. And I know unfortunately, Mr. Pickford had an accident where they went up and hit his retaining wall there in the front and it took a bit for him to repair it. So I don't know, where does the other resident live?
But to be honest, I don't know.
I don't, I didn't recognize that name.
No.
I I have asked whether, who has to pay for that? What we do, we haven't gotten an answer yet on that request, so we're still looking at it.
I know we have to maintain it.
Yeah, well, once the light goes up, we have to maintain it, absolutely.
We'll ensure it. And I know there are roughly fifty thousand dollars fees.
And I don't know if it has the traffic.
We can.
That would be less than fifty thousand.
The little sparkly.
The solar ones.
The solar ones.
Yeah, 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 the flunky lights that go around the stop sign to to hurt you. There's a stop sign there.
Yeah, don't forget that there are signs about a hundred feet before each one of those signs in the direction you're coming to notify you that there's a stop sign in.
Yeah, well, apparently some people are not seeing all of the signs.
I've been hit down there.
You have?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Yeah, I saw it.
I do remember you mentioning it.
Because it, there's no uh damage or anything, but she did.
She hit the middle of your car?
Yes, yeah, whacked me in the tire.
Yeah, yeah, absolutely.
Wow.
It's because they were on their phone.
Of course.
Cam and everything.
Additionally, I was, I've answered a residence question regarding, uh, a certain resident would like to install a stair lift on the front of her home in order to take care of a disabled family member. Um, uh, according to building code officer Tartaglia, it it can't be at the front. It has to do with the. Um, I don't have my notes from that conversation in front of these. I think it's like the building envelope. Who knows? Does that sound right to you? Um, but it probably could be accommodated on a side or a back door. Her concern is that the side is, it's a shared driveway, and so there might be limitations in her ability to stick something there. And she had some issue with the back. So uh, Mr. Tartaglia will be meeting with her. So hopefully the two of them can come up. I suggested rather than submitting a permit that will get denied. Go through that process with Mr. Tartaglia informally, informally, cuz he could potentially suggest the.
Well, we've worked this out with other uh handicap accessible locations that were presented to us. Uh, I'm sure we'll be able to work something out.
I would think so, and I.
I hadn't heard about that one.
Let her know, yeah. Uh, we have three proposed plantings by the Shade Tree Committee, and I did just see your email. I think Kate, uh, if you'd like to.
Well, I think that they're, they're getting a little over their skis.
Maybe I should, let me just get the context first. So basically, the Shade Tree Advisory Committee, I believe was commissioned to um, create uh ordinance to create a shade tree commission.
Correct.
Right?
And to advise on our trees.
And advise on our trees and all that. So they've been really, um, they've been really active. I'm very happy that to have that level of community engagement. Um, their proposal is there's three locations. One is at the pool. One is, I think, on school property. That was your concern. And then one is at the Triangle Park. And frankly, they're, I don't know.
But it is, they're, they're asking for a pollinating garden. And I was at their last meeting, and their last meeting, they were discussing a way of us to recapture without having the leaves removed, to be able to have them. And they wanted to do a small pilot project. And I thought the swim club was a very good space to do it. The pollinating came out of the blue yesterday. So I think we need to get more information from them.
It didn't seem like it's, it came out of the blue for us. I guess it was then communicated to us.
I mean.
There were pictures, clearly they were planning.
They were working on it, but I never heard anything at their meeting.
This is just a small planning of stuff like wildflowers and stuff like that. And here he is, Mr. Tartaglia. Um.
I feel like they need to review our parks, open parks.
They have in in great detail. And and the thing that the reason why I think we ought to approve it is that it is um there's no cost, no maintenance to the borough. There's no cost or the borough doesn't need to support it physically. It's small. And we can always get rid of it if we, as you're saying, if there's something. It didn't seem like anything that would.
I didn't have a time to review it.
I looked at it. It's very.
I would say that.
Minimal, I think.
I told them for the leaf project, one spot, swim club was fine. I think if they wanna do something, pollinate garden, swim club, one spot is fine.
Get started.
Just, let's see how it works.
Kate, did you wanna explain your feelings?
Well, I, first of all, I wanna say that I'm super excited that they're very enthusiastic and very active and wanna be out there doing these things. And I'm appreciative of the amount of work and effort that they put into this. Um, they did put together a proposal that includes like a plan of we wanna plant these number of trees and these types of trees and put them here. And we referenced the master plan and all of this. Which I think is fantastic. But I do feel that the intent of an advisory committee was we asked them to help us review our current code. Help us bring it up to date and to help us craft the language to establish an official commission whose job would then be to do these kinds of projects. And so I feel like that I want all of these things. I love all of these things. I'm a big plant tree.
You're a plant gal.
Happy with their, the work that they're doing. But because we don't have the enabling legislation, we don't have formal members that have been appointed to certain terms over certain periods of time. We don't have a list of approved trees that we've had a chance to talk about with an arborist. Um, things like that. I feel like this is.
Dan Comley is an arborist. He's not a certified arborist, but he's, he's a legit arborist.
I, I understand.
And he's on their committee, that's what I'm saying.
But again, that's an advisory committee that was to advise the borough about how to establish a commission and what its work would be. So we don't have the enabling legislation that technically is moving this work along. And I know that this is volunteer and the potential could get um donations of trees from different organizations, but like I would like to understand the work of the organizations that are giving, that are doing the donations and the relationship with the borough. Um, and again, I just, I feel like this is a little bit part before the worst. From this perspective, I love, you should see my backyard. I have a pollinator garden in my backyard. Trust me, I'm, I'm all about this. But, you know, there's, there's the suggestion of putting in uh sweet gum trees. And I don't know if anyone has a sweet gum tree.
No, thank you.
Councilwoman orders. Um, how you feel about that?
That's the balls, that's the ball. Yeah. I can answer.
Again, that's, that's, that's my feeling on this.
I can answer some of your concerns. I know they, they were moving very well along to come up with the ordinance. Uh, but there was a feeling they wanted to do some product, and they, they've done some, they've done some uh vine cutting of, uh, get off of trees one back over here. Uh, uh, I don't know if they've approached your property yet.
Not only approached, but they've taken.
They've done a lot of good work with that, and their thought was they wanted, they wanted to get some of these things done. I have no problem with them doing a test pilot for each of those programs at the swim club. Um, and I've asked them to please present their proposal for the ordinance, and I don't know exactly when that's gonna happen.
Councilwoman, why don't you talk to them with your concerns? Cuz you have, I, I'm not a I'm not a gardener, right? And I like, you say sweet gum or whatever, and I think of Wrigley's, so. Yeah, so I don't know. You know what I mean? Yeah, that doesn't sound good.
Have to walk on.
So, could you?
Again, it, no, no tree that gets planted on a rural property is truly without cause. At some point, a tree is growing, going to grow very large. Leaves are going to fall and it's gonna be part of our general park maintenance plan. Branches are going to fall. A tree is going to get hit by lightning or wind is gonna take something out and then it becomes a thing, so.
Maybe we could tell them no trees.
So I, I.
Well, I don't thi, I don't think they've asked us.
I know the Parks Master Plan, trust me, I'm in favor of the concept. I think it's just until we've established, like, what are the operating rules? Where are they supposed to be seeking out these donations from? What, do we have preferred partners, things like that?
I mean, what you're proposing is all good, but it's very bureaucratic. And I think.
Unfortunately, the government.
All that we're looking to do is for them to, I mean, I, I would say they wanna do this in the fall. Can't we at least let them do it in one place? You know what I mean?
And they're not talking about planting any trees, correct?
I didn't think so, but apparently so.
Are there gonna be trees in the pollinating garden?
Did you ever read the book Get a Mouse Cookie?
No, but could we, but could, I mean. Kate, I do defer to your knowledge of of trees and all that stuff. So I mean, I'm not.
There's three different spots that they identified. They did have different trees.
I don't wanna discourage them. I think that they've got a lot of enthusiasm and I think.
I thought a pollinating garden was.
I don't want the council and I to become just the no party, that, you know, they wanna do something good for the borough. Something no, no cost, something that they're gonna put all their blood, sweat and tears into. And we're just gonna say no, just because we didn't get the proper study done. To me, that's.
Well, does this garden last, like you said, they wanna do one in the fall, these?
We could bulldoze straight over this thing.
I haven't had a chance to review the, the whole thing. I don't know whether Kate did. I, I didn't real, a pollinating garden, I mean, does not include a tree.
Exactly.
It includes some bushes and plants that the bees and stuff wanna go on. Yeah.
Can't we do something that will, that, I mean.
Let them give us samples.
Well, they, they gave us lots, oh, a sample area, yeah. Yeah. I, I mean.
Just to show their stuff.
Let, I'll tell them to come to our next council meeting and make a presentation.
Something out, you know, guys don't have to feel the same way that I feel about it. Um, I, I.
Well, I'm not gonna prove anything. I'm the mayor. You know, I mean, I'm not, you're the, you're the councilwoman, so.
Seeds that I could give them from my backyard to start this pollinator garden. I'm not opposed to the idea of a pollinator garden.
I will reach, I'll reach out to Sarah.
About what it is they're looking for and.
She was gonna come today, and I said, and I said, you don't have to come.
Uh, Mr. Mayor?
Group anyway.
Yeah.
See, just have coherent questions. So those are just my initial.
I will, I will, I will speak with Sarah O'Neill, who is uh driving this and ask her to pick one spot, the pool. As a test and to give us all the details for that.
About that.
And then we'll have her come to the meeting or and, and October fifteenth.
Two questions over here.
What? Council, the coun, Councilwoman Kelly.
To encourage more volunteers to work with them.
Exactly.
So it's kind of an advertisement, but I, yeah, doing a small area to get started. I mean, I just keep thinking of that little vegetable garden outside the school. That's now, it was always weed.
It lasts one season.
Yeah.
So, but just the more volunteers, the more they can do, the more they can get all their paperwork in a row. Which I, I do think is very important.
I think they'll follow up. I don't think that they're gonna let something go fallow like that vegetable garden. Yeah. Yeah.
So I, I mean.
Is that that thing you mean, right on the paths? That box thing?
Looked great the first year.
I believe the previous principal started something there, Janet Breaker, a number of years ago. That's why that was set up there. And then when she left, it kind of, and then I guess they tried to start it again. Vice President Lambert.
I like the idea of the concerns or the question of being presented. I understand you're gonna have a conversation. There are valid questions that could be presented because if she comes and.
Well, I'm gonna ask.
Do all that versus giving her the information and then they can say this is what we bring. But anything that's planted in the borough belongs to the borough, regardless of what they say. Unless I'm incorrect. So when they, if they should move or whatever should happen, then it's on the borough. But the pollinated garden or, or other things that they want to do, they've come to my home and they've done really good advising me on my tree. Um, and, but they wanna plant another tree. But I think that giving them the opportunity to have the information ahead of time and then they can, you know.
I'm gonna ask them to send it next week so that everybody has a chance to look at it.
But they have it now. They should, we should share it with council.
No, I wanna, yeah, I'm gonna, let me talk with her first, because I'm not, we're not gonna do all three sites.
For sure. But I'm saying, they, and we could ask for, she sent us a gigantic thing that, frankly, I didn't have the time to digest.
Neither did I.
And then she, then she sent an executive summary view, which I could, it was only three pages and it was fine. Um, and so maybe what you could do is propose doing something like that with a specific location in mind.
Have we had a shade tree commission in the past ever?
There was years ago, and even though we don't have legislation, I've been told by a former uh solicitor that because it's allowed by state law, we're, we could set up, but we should have our own ordinance for it, and we don't, we don't have it. And then they are not a commission, they're an advisory committee. That's it. Just like the parks was an advisory committee. And the recycling was an advisory. And the recycling was an advisory committee.
So um what's listed on the Borough website and why I mentioned the book is because it only specifically talks about trees. You start going into other plants and everything else.
Well, I said, when I was at their meeting, they were talking about leaf collection and reuse. And I thought that's, it goes to you with trees. So let's try that.
Put into falls under the purview of which you can call it the shade tree commission. I believe uh Susan Borders said Darby had a shade tree commission that actually is more like a Parks and Rec. Because it, it's called shade tree, but it has a vast array of responsibilities. So like again, if it's only talking about trees and currently that's what we have, that's why I feel like it would be great if we had a formal committee or commission that defines like what their roles were, what their purviews were, how deep we're going into this. And again, we've already suggested in one of our projects to include a little bit of funding for for them to be able to do some of these things next year. So you know, we're certainly moving in the direction of we want to have the support, but I think we do need to have some guardrails around some of this because what one person thinks is beautiful in the neighborhood, not necessarily the next person does. And to your point, we also have some restrictions about certain plantings. You can't plant bamboo. So we, as an example, so we do have guardrails around what you shouldn't, shouldn't be planting in the neighborhood. That's, that's my only kind of thought around which is would be better if we could have a little bit more guardrails around this. I know they want to apply for grants. Again, is it within their purview to apply for grants? We would say so in an established commission. They would have the ability to seek out grants that they want and then present them to council. So this is a, a great project and I'm so excited that they're super enthusiastic, but I do think the whole give them else, it could be, we, we should be careful with just saying, I think this is a great idea. Yes, go plant. They planned a sweet gum tree. And does anyone remember how many complaints we get about the residents on Birchwood? Whose property is back up to the pool? And if we add sweet gum trees, it's not going to dump sweet gum balls in their backyard.
They'll love it.
Good luck to future councils.
Right.
I mean, it, it's not, it's not nothing. It's not free.
Yeah, okay. I agree with, I agree with you a hundred percent.
Anybody, anybody else have any comments to make? I will contact Sarah, get a specific nailed down. I haven't had a chance to honestly to read the whole proposal, so I'm coming in here half half blind on this matter, but and when I think in pollinating guarding, I'm thinking bushes and
and like.
But not, not a tree, but apparently they, they included a tree planting there. So. It has to come to council and I said this to them, there was a rush for the last grant application. Because we didn't have a meeting scheduled, but any grant application has to be approved by council in the future, period.
Okay.
Full stop.
And that's, that's been exactly what I've said.
And I've communicated to them as well.
Um, if, just two more things. I appreciate everyone's patience. Actually, Mr. Tartaglia, I have a question for you regarding trash cans at Giant. Um, is that they vanished at some point, probably sometime over a few years ago. There's no more trash can. So instead people just throw the stuff all over the place. Um, obviously we could, um, and have we called them? I think we've talked about maybe reaching out again to complain about the garbage. Remember we talked about the garbage tornadoes that we've been seeing down there? Um.
We did once when you, somebody complained about the tornado storm of.
Yeah. That was me.
And they took care of it.
Okay.
But is it continuing? That I don't know.
So if we wanted there to be trash cans at all of our retail establishments, that would just be something we could do by ordinance, right?
They should be banned.
You're trying to tell someone who we've already told you can't do anything outside of your retail space. That you now have to take care of something outside of your retail space.
Sweet gum.
Well, it's on their property, right? I mean, it's.
Yeah, but the giant can't sell stuff on the sidewalk.
She went off on a tirade.
Your attorney would have to tell you whether or not we can have an ordinance that forces them to put trash cans down. And we can tell the owner of the entire property that they have to maintain it and clean it. But I'm not seeing.
And we wouldn't need a new ordinance for that, I'm sure.
I'm not seeing where you could pass an ordinance telling the family dollar or the cleaners that they have to put a trash can outside and take care of it.
Well, wouldn't we tell the landlord? We wouldn't tell the individual retailers.
You can, like I said.
That's something maybe.
It's been a long time since that was developed. I know there's a developer's agreement. You don't have any recollection if there's anything in there about that. It's been so long ago, I can't remember. Yeah, I know. More than thirty.
You've got a brain that remembers it all, Mr. Tartaglia.
Somewhere, do we have, we should have that developers agreement on file in the office somewhere.
Somewhere.
Yeah. Because we, we're going to give us an update.
I know exactly where it was in phase one.
We'll get to that later. What's your last point, Mayor?
Last point is I didn't do any weddings in the preceding quarter. I'm supposed to tell you that. So by law, I need to report that to the public. So didn't get any money for weddings, but and that concludes my report. Thank you all for your patience.
Any questions for the mayor? Seeing none, moving on. Mr. White? Borough manager. For three more months.
Seventy seven days. So I have a building update and I guess what I'm going to be looking for is we're going to have an open house and I know I spoke to council president and we were kind of looking for Saturday or.
Yeah, something like that.
Okay. So it looks like we're probably at ninety five percent done. Uh, we still need the punch list inside and out. I need um, Mr. Tartaglia to do his inspection as well, but I, I think we could probably schedule something first or second week of November.
Okay. When do we get the lettering on the outside of the building?
And so we had a meeting today on that and they were looking at two to three weeks, which probably means four. Nothing's been on time.
Will that be on the Clifton Heights side?
So there will be one on the Clifton side. There will be one on the Providence side and there's actually one on, one on the east and west side of the building.
Right.
Um, the detention equipment, which is the benches in the two cells and the two tables, one in process and one in the interview room, they are six to eight weeks out. Not too concerned because we could stick anything in there just for an open house. Uh, besides for that, it's pretty minimal stuff that needs to be done at this.
The Sally Port is finished?
The Sally Port is done. So I, I think we should just talk, Dan, in the next two weeks about what we want to do and what, what date we want to pick for an open house and uh, Melissa, are we sending out another flyer or anything?
Not another flyer for fall.
Yeah, oh, but you can do another, you can do a winter one.
I'm just thinking if we were going to.
We'll do a mailer.
We could do a mail like we did for EIT.
Okay.
Um.
Okay. Thank, thank you. So that's really all I have is.
Is anything going to go up on the Clifton side? It looks so unadorned right now. So just the lettering. I've just, I don't know, before it looked kind of cozy and cute.
Because it was the entrance.
Right.
Is it Alden Borough?
Now it looks kind of plain and missing something. Plantings and wording. No, probably.
So we can do that.
Sweet gum trees can go in there.
Good idea.
Yeah, I mean, my, Mr. Mayor, we can actually talk about doing some type of plantings along the Clifton Avenue side, even if it's from um, the corner of the building up to where the garage is. Just to give it a little bit of color or something.
Yeah, great.
Where do we stand? Uh, I saw the equipment of the material apparently arrived today or the last week for the raising of the wall around the equipment.
Yeah, unfortunately they sent us the brick, not the block that goes on first. So I had a nice conversation with uh NCI today about you know, you put a trailer in their playground. I need an orange fence on it today. So hopefully by tomorrow, they get it.
Oh, is there a trailer? I only saw stacks and is it on a trailer?
It's on a trailer.
I, I just saw the stacks.
Unfortunately, the kids play out there.
Yes, they do.
You know, you got a big talk a chunk. Yeah, if it's not there tomorrow, I'm going to start binging and if I have to, I'll we'll call our guy and tell him to do it and backcharge.
Backcharge them, absolutely.
Yeah, pretty soon the kids will be throwing alley apples at you.
I don't think they got the concept that there's a elementary school next door.
Right.
Um, and then I did speak to Council President Ash Switzer that I did get. I called four different people for the railing on the side of the building. We only had one person respond. I actually did speak to three of the four people left messages at the other one. So I'm waiting on our, Mr. Cole here to give me an answer back whether we can go with the bid because it is over the threshold of the twelve four, but under the advertising one. So requirements are you need three telephonic.
It's around eighteen thousand to run a railing all the way down the sidewalk and include a uh fence, a gate into the entrance area there.
I can tell you, a lot of people use that walkway to get from one end to the other. I mean, whether it is um, even parents dropping their kids off, they walk right up there. So.
Okay.
But at least it would keep during the school day, it would keep the kids away from our.
Okay.
That's all I have.
Any other questions for the council or Vice President Lambert?
Mr. White, is the flag mailbox there?
No, there is no mailboxes there.
It's up at the American Legion.
I would imagine there's, pretty soon there's going to be one for the Christmas card.
Yeah.
So the pad's done. The pad's, pad will uh hold up to three boxes.
Okay.
They've talked about, they've talked about moving it back up, but they haven't done it yet, the legion.
Okay, but when it is going to go back on Providence?
That's where it's, that's.
We'll put that on one end and then we'll save, or maybe in the middle, we'll save a spot for the uh letters. The letters to Santa, letters to soldiers?
Letters, uh, letters to Sam.
Santa.
Yeah.
Yeah, the Cards for the Truth is a uh region thing.
Okay, but it will be set for three boxes if you guys want something in the future.
But now they're the region.
Yep. Any other questions for Borough Manager?
Yeah.
All right. Thank you very much. Solicitor, Mr. Cole, you got a lot on your docket coming up.
I do have a lot on my docket coming up, but I don't have, I don't have anything for the, for the group right now.
Okay. Very good. Any questions? Seeing none, Borough Engineer, Mr. Burns, thank you very much for being here tonight.
Thank you, Mr. President. Um, so I'm sure everyone's aware the road program's ongoing. I haven't had a chance to speak with our inspector today, but um, he informed me two days ago that the top coat, the wearing course will be complete tomorrow. Um, if not, the next day.
Good.
They're finishing up in Clifton Heights, um, currently, and I'll put down that. Uh, other than that, um, we received our partial, our grant reimbursement for the Magnolia project or the watershed restoration program grant. That was for seventy five thousand. That's only a portion of it. The other portion is through another grant program that's uh funded through the COVID money. Uh, and that has been applied for and it's ongoing. Other than that, that does conclude my report.
Uh, that's about two hundred and twelve thousand if my memory serves you correctly for that. And do we have a estimated timeline on that one? It's not.
I have a lot to say next month, but I mean, the way things are going.
Uh, well, they don't have a budget. They, they don't have a budget. It's only three months. They don't have a budget at the state level. So who knows?
Yeah.
Where do we stand with our RACP grant? Do you have any update on that?
Uh, budget approved, the grant agreement. Um, and our, uh, we have a uh status update meeting in two weeks. And that portion, that meeting will set the construction phase. It's already done. Um, and then at that time, um, the state will ask us for things of uh certified payroll and pay apps that have been already paid for. And, and that'll uh start the reimbursement process.
It's looking like their original saying of February is probably going to hang in there.
Yes.
Okay. I'll add it to my list of grants we don't go for anymore, along with the uh multi-modal pen dock. All right. I appreciate it. Any other questions for the Borough Engineer? Matt, thank you very much for following up on those. Good, let us know how we make out in the update meeting. Will that be before our meeting on the fifteenth or afterwards? Right after? Okay. Uh, our treasurer is returning from her, well, it's not yet, but she's in Australia because she just had her second grandchild. Not to upstage you.
I guess they're both born the same day.
Were they really? Oh, son of a gun. I didn't know that. Wow.
I know. She had a C-section. We had it six thirty at night, so I'm sure.
So uh, who is presenting the treasurer's report? The Borough Manager in her, in her absence?
Treasurer report for September, starting with the general fund, balance cash on hand. Seven hundred and fifty seven thousand, eight hundred and five dollars and thirty nine cents. Transfer from the general fund, forty thousand, eight hundred and fifty two dollars, twenty eight cents. Total receipts for the period, one hundred and sixty one thousand, five hundred and thirty one dollars and eighty two cents. Expenditures for the same period, two hundred and fifty one thousand, six hundred and twenty dollars and seventy six cents. Leaving a balance of cash on hand, seven hundred and eight thousand, five hundred and sixty eight dollars and seventy three cents. Moving on to the highway fund, starting with a balance of cash on hand, ninety seven thousand, one hundred and thirty six dollars and seventy cents. Total receipt for the period were one dollar, ninety three dollars in interest. Expenditures for this period is zero, but that will change next month because we are doing the road program as we speak. Leaving a balance of cash on hand of ninety seven thousand, one hundred and thirty eight dollars and sixty three cents. Moving on to the sewer fund, starting with a balance of cash on hand, three hundred and fifty six thousand, three hundred and sixty eight dollars and eleven cents. Total receipt for the period, three thousand, nine hundred and forty three dollars and fifty cents. Expenditures for the period, eighty eight thousand, one hundred and sixty eight dollars. Leaving a balance of cash on hand, two hundred and seventy two thousand, one hundred and forty three dollars and sixty one cents. Mr. President, at this time, I'm asking council's approval to release funds from the following accounts to pay our bills for the month. From the general fund, two hundred and fifty one thousand, six hundred and twenty dollars and seventy six cents. From the sewer fund, eighty eight thousand, one hundred and sixty eight dollars.
Uh, there's a motion, is, do I have a motion to approve the treasurer's report and release the funds from the general and sewer fund as indicated? Councilwoman Smythe, is there a second to that motion? Vice President, any other questions for you? Uh, I'll ask after we vote on it. All those in favor? Uh, any opposed? I presume that that eighty eight thousand is our Derby, Derby Creek joint authority?
That's correct.
Is that our last payment of the year or do we have to make one in December?
That's our last one for the year. More or less what they call true up.
Okay. We haven't heard where we stand on that.
I have not got the report and I won't get it until, it's usually the first or second week in November is when we get the final report.
And our representative isn't here tonight to ask him where we stand. Uh, with the transfer, was that for the bond issue? That forty thousand, was that from the bond that it got transferred into the general fund probably? To pay the building?
I don't, probably, yes, it was.
Yeah, okay. Any other questions? Thank you very much for substituting. We're going to get as much work out of you as possible last seventy seven days.
Right.
Okay, reports of council committees, public health, Councilwoman Kelly.
I would like to make a motion to advertise the animal control reimbursement ordinance.
Uh, clarification, we have, we don't have that order. This is an authorization for us to spend money to advertise. Is that not correct?
That's correct.
All right. All right. So there's a motion to uh allow the advertising of an animal control reimbursement ordinance. Is there a second to that motion? Councilman Borders, uh, my understanding is we discussed, and I'll ask the chief. Where do we stand with the? What was, I forgot the name, Delaware Valley.
Brandywine Valley.
Yeah, Brandywine Valley, yeah. Cause we were wait.
We received uh their generic contract and forward that to Mr. Cole.
Okay.
Our manager, Tom White, has a copy of that for review, your standard contract.
Okay. So we got accepted because the last meeting, we weren't sure whether they were going to accept us.
We still have to be accepted. They sent us the contract for us review because I explained to them that uh it's going to be pending solicitors review. So that's why they sent it to us.
Okay.
Uh, for our end to review and then we would, we agree to it. We agree to it, we would then insert it back and then we would get notification that they're agreeing to it.
Okay.
And proceed with the process.
Um, and this is to allow us to get, 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 this will be allowing us to get reimbursement and you haven't drafted it yet.
That's, that's correct. I think I, 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 I think I'm trying to also discern. What is, what are appropriate reimbursable activities and, and at what point should, um, uh. You know, the, uh, borough, I, I be. Have the cost as opposed to that being shifted to. Um, the, the resident.
But you do have the contract, so you know what they're charging us for different things.
Uh, yes, there's.
Are there any other questions? Did we already vote on this? No, you didn't vote yet. Uh, is there any other questions?
I'm glad that we're bringing this up because we had a lost dog situation this past week. And I went down a complete rabbit hole as far as what was. What is being done, what has been done and what could be done as far as lost pets. And long story short, the county for the last five years does not take cats or dogs. Um, there was mention of. Surrounding. Police forces and what they do with lost animals and I was disheartened by that. And so the fact that we are doing this and going to have Brandywine uh, as a potential. Uh, um, contract. That enlightens my heart because uh, no resident should have to go through what I did because. Uh, in the end, it's unfair to me.
Right, good. Did you, was it your dog that was lost or?
No, it was not.
Okay.
He found it.
Okay.
Uh, not shipped. We, we used a scanner, Officer Jackson's scanner, uh, it wasn't shipped. But that just like, because I was gonna bring it up tonight and I'm glad that we were, we are talking about it because um, our surrounding towns. I feel bad for them and their animals.
So where is the doggy now? In your basement?
Uh.
Or you let it go?
Foster, that's a federal offense, by the way.
Is that right?
Yes, it is. With a foster home right now.
Oh, thank you very much for that. Are there any other questions concerning the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Uh, alright, our solicitor worked on that and we'll review the contract and maybe next month, next meeting, we can. Approve it and send it back to Brandywine to have them approve. What?
Made the motion, yes.
Uh, Sue Kelly made it and Buddy seconded it, yeah. Okay. Councilwoman Kelly is still on the, that's right, she's over committee, she made the motion.
But the most exciting part of the entire meeting are August trash totals. Hundred and forty-six point sixty-seven tons. And our recycling totals is still staying up there. We can get higher though. Three point seven nine tons. And just to let you know, because this is the other thing everybody's excited about, the last. Household hazardous waste collection for this year. Is October the eleventh, which is a Saturday. It's at Upper Chichester Municipal Building. You do have to have an appointment. And this flyer is on our website, so you don't have to write it down. And that.
Alright, thank you, Councilwoman. Is there any questions for the Councilwoman? We, we have a, when's our next?
October twenty-sixth.
That's a drug takeback and e-cycling.
Still have a plug from generations back, we'll take it.
I did get the, thank you very much. Melissa for doing the work on the, I, I, was that on there? I didn't, I looked at the, all the fall newsletter. Yeah. Okay. Alright. I know there's a copy sitting over there. I got it, but it looked very nice. I just.
Look terrific.
Didn't have a chance.
So quick, home is so quick, John.
Yes, he is.
Did everybody get one?
Oh, please, don't. Did someone knock at it?
It's right there, very good. There's extras over there, you need them.
Yeah.
I brought some.
I don't care about extras. I care about this police. Good job, John.
Are there any, any other, any other, it's on there? Okay, thank you.
See you there.
Uh, any other questions for the Councilwoman? Seeing none, moving on to Public Works, Mr. Borders.
Uh, thank you, Mr. President. Uh, I've got a, I guess, uh, some old news at this point. Uh, the street depression at Walnut and South Greenwood has been repaired. Okay, uh, that was, you know, the one in the middle of the intersection.
Yeah, I saw that like months ago.
I, I, I wasn't sure what the, you know, what actually caused it. You know, I periodically drive by, I didn't know what was gonna be done and I drove by one day and said, hey, they fixed it. And so. Whatever it was, it isn't now.
Great.
Also a storm inlet on Maryland Avenue at Loud Run has been repaired. Uh, that wasn't on my radar until I saw some. Tons by it and then drove by a couple days later and it's all better. Uh, and we're still monitoring, uh, a street depression on North Mansell Avenue and West Wayne Avenue. And uh, the residents are asked to, uh, please keep your curb lines clean and make sure your sump pumps are discharging onto your lawns and not into the streets and sewers. And also when you drain your pools, please discharge the water onto your lawn and not into the street. And that brings up a question, uh, regarding the newsletter. What is, yeah, how do you dechlorinate your pool? Because it's. Decorinating water.
Right, the, there are. Two methods, one is to let it sit for a while and the chlorine will dissipate, or there is a chemical called sodium thioc sulfate that will knock the chlorine out before you dump it.
Okay. Uh, so what would be, uh, you know, would you have an average time? You could just let it sit before you dump it or?
It depends on how high the chlorine count was before you start.
Oh, okay.
If it's relatively normal, probably a couple of days is all it would take, but if it's much, I've done some work where. You could have put your whitewash in the pool, the chlorine count was so high. I don't know what they did to make it go that high, but it was kinda crazy. You shouldn't be swimming in it, in that, in that high of a situation, but.
But uh, thank you, Mr. President. Uh, that, that uh, concludes my report.
Thank you, Mr. Borders. Any questions for the councilmen? John, do you know what causes depression at?
I do not.
Greenwood, well, we haven't gotten the bill or anything yet on it. Be interesting to know.
Surprise I haven't.
Yeah. Mr. Walker. Yep.
Uh, so there's update about the, the road program, uh, so that's ongoing and should be wrapped up soon. Uh, Magnolia and Albert is also scraped and hopefully going to be blacktopped. In the same time period, it's, yes, that's part of it. Um, I did receive a communication, uh, from a residence. At. North Elm and Springfield about, uh, code enforcement officer. Asking about debris that had been built up on, uh, what looks like their curb. They've received several notices and a person visit and they don't agree that they should be cleaning up debris that is in the road. However, taking a look at what else they wrote, uh, they filled ten bags and trued two trash cans in the process. That amount of debris will never end up in the road.
Right.
There are cars that goodbye, so that is on their curb line. And is the homeowner's responsibility to clean up their. Uh. Um. Their debris and make sure that, uh, you know. The sewers can be accessed and cars goodbye and so forth and so on, but they are trying to point out that it is the borough's responsibility. Uh, as per stated on our website, but I'd just like to say that is not the case. If it is in the road, absolutely, but it is along the curb, curb line. And ten trash bags full, that is the resident's responsibility. And all other residents seem to, seem to, uh, comply, so. I appreciate it and I'll respond to them, uh, letting them know accordingly. That concludes my report. Before that, leaves are falling. As, uh, Councilman Borders pointed out, keep them clear, raise them up, don't put them out on the curb. That concluded my report.
Thank you very much. Any question for the council? Seeing none, moving on to Public Safety, Councilwoman Lambert.
Thank you, President. I, um, would like to make a motion to lease a police vehicle. Um. Not to exceed twenty thousand dollars a year, but to purchase it for seventy thousand dollars in paving equipment. That would include the equipment, uh, upfitting and strapping.
There's a motion on the floor to lease a police vehicle not to exceed twenty thousand dollars a year or to purchase for seventy thousand dollars. Including equipment, uplift, outfit and striping. Is there another? Is there a second to that motion? Mr. Borders, uh, I'll ask the chief. I believe we have one. Is there a car that's out of commission at the present time?
Yes.
And did we ever get reimbursement for? The vehicle that we exchanged for the truck that came in?
Yeah, it went to auction, we received the response.
Alright. Uh.
We'll do the same with this vehicle, it was no auction.
Okay, and those are deposited with the, with the leasing company because they were the ones that handled that, is that correct? Okay. So there's a motion on the floor. Uh, any other questions from the council people? Mr. Borders.
So, uh, what, what, what would the average life of a police vehicle be? It, it, it all depends. It depends on your municipality, on how they're run. Everything, um, over the years, uh, when I first started here, we replaced. We would get a vehicle in, it would be replaced in three years. Um, we've kinda stretched it out at different timeframes.
Mm-hmm.
Um, one of the things that I, I feel right now is that we, anywhere from three to five years for replacement. Uh, five years being probably the, the, the max. While keeping a vehicle.
Hmm.
That's not replacing a vehicle over five years. That's replacing a vehicle that we purchased today. Five years would be the max. We'd have to replace everything.
Okay.
So, again, it comes down to. How big your municipality is, how much they're run.
Hmm.
Our vehicles, when we're at full complement, they're run twelve-hour shifts. Some municipalities may run them twenty-four hour shift. So if they're running twenty-four hours, three hundred and sixty-five days a year, obviously that's gonna shorten that timeframe of when you need to replace it also. You know, whether it's highway versus. You know, neighborhoods and stuff like that. The biggest thing that we look at is not only the engine miles, but it's the engine hours.
Right.
You know, all that, so. Yeah, now you gotta keep them running to keep all the electronics running and everything else.
Are we also looking at a hybrid?
Yeah, one of the variables that we're looking at is a hybrid.
Interesting, okay.
So, which, some of the other municipalities have had, um, that are running hybrid vehicles. I'm getting some feedback that they're kinda seeing some cost savings there with gas and stuff like that.
Which has a hybrid station?
No, it's not a full electric vehicle. What it is, it's a separate power supply within the vehicle that when the vehicle's shut off. All the other things are continued in the run, air conditioning, things like that, uh, and everything without it wasting gas.
Okay, so.
And the battery recharges as you're driving.
About eighty-eight hours.
That's right, that's correct.
And the batteries typically last about ten years and if they're run twenty-four hours, you can cut it down to about five years.
So. That's one of the vehicles that we're looking at. Um, it also comes down to what's available to us.
Right.
Right now, there are some hybrids that are available immediately, so versus some other vehicles thing are, are kind of on the way, yes, so.
Are there any other questions for the council members? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Uh, yeah.
I'm sorry.
Yeah, just a quick question. Is the new police, uh, pickup truck being used as much as a regular vehicle? It's, yeah, it's part of patrol. Okay, so it goes out just as much as. That's correct. That's correct.
Alright, I'll call the question. All those in favor? Aye, any opposed? I just have it, uh, I, I bring this up, uh. Where do we stand with the grant that we've, application we put in for the gaming money? I forgot to ask that.
Yeah, I, I, I did respond to your email.
Yeah.
They. It looks like we're gonna get it from my discussion with the agency, um, however. You can put in for another, like, we could put in another grant application right now.
Well, I know the next round ends on November thirtieth, so I thought they would have rewarded before that had happened.
I, I think it's a still budget for it. Um, but we were assigned a, um, whoever we would use the grant. And if we're not assigned that, usually we go to the bottom and file and they, those get rejected.
Okay.
So it was a good sign that we got, because they requested additional documents that we did provide them, so.
And I believe the request was for two, two, two police vehicles and a pickup truck, obviously, yeah, three vehicles. Hopefully we get one of them, which will help with our fleet. Uh, I'm sorry, go ahead, Joyce, I'm sorry.
At the. Clifton Heights Fire Company report for Alden for the month of August, there were seven alarms. Um, including those were three motor vehicle, motor vehicle crashes. Um, investigation and assist with EMS. A pedestrian was struck.
Hmm.
And there was a hazmat fuel spill. There were no losses in Alden Borough for this period and. Well, the police wrote, so overall, there was, um, there was. Sixty-six members that attended training and special assignments, which included us. Um, shows that there were three point seven five minutes was the average response time. And times in service, there was seventeen hours and fifteen minutes, average of fourteen point five minutes per alarm. For the, um, Alden Police Department. For the month of August, um, in month of August, the Alden Police Department logged. Eight hundred and ninety-one incident reports, which included two hundred and fifty-one calls for service. Included in these incident reports that not total were, um. One assault, two sex offenses, twenty-two domestic disturbances. Two disorderly conducts for harassment reports. Three disorderly persons reports, seventeen suspicious activity. Three threats. Fourteen motor vehicle accidents. There were forty medical emergencies and six subjects in mental, mental health crisis. The miles patrolled by the Alden Police for the month of August were three thousand, four hundred and fourteen. Issues, uh. Uh, one hundred and forty-six traffic citations were issued. Fifty-five parking were issued. There were two arrests, there were ninety-nine traffic details. And four hundred and eighty-one foot patrol reports. And the. Other part of the report, we see two, um, residents, uh, with inquiries about. Property situations. One of them I spoke with Mr. White about. And the other one, I'm waiting to hear back from her because she had to talk with her husband after she. So that concludes my report.
Thank you very much, Councilwoman. Any questions for the Councilwoman?
Uh, I like that they break down of the incidences. I appreciate that. Because I'm just adding them up and I was like, okay, four hundred and eighty-one foot patrol, I was just like, that makes a lot more sense than not. But thank you for that.
When the arrests, are we using our facility for holding or not yet?
We can't.
It's not ready to go, okay. Any other questions for the council? Moment, seeing none, thank you very much. Law and Order, it's Councilwoman Blunt.
Motion to approve Brandywine Valley SPCA five-year contract not to exceed six thousand, seven hundred dollars per year. Upon solicitors approval.
There's a motion on the floor to approve Brandywine Valley SPCA five-year contract not to exceed six thousand, seven hundred dollars per year upon the solicitor's approval. As we discussed, is there a second to that motion? Councilwoman Kelly, any further discussion?
So, just to make sure, not to exceed six thousand, seven hundred dollars if there are excessive calls.
So there is some à la carte in there.
Okay.
Uh, sixty-seven hundred is actually the higher number. The first three years are actually cheaper than that and then there's an increase going up.
Okay.
But I stuck with the highest number. Just to make it easier, I, I didn't do a breakdown as far as.
Okay, yeah, because it all depends on the amount of calls.
Hmm, that's correct.
Yeah, so, okay. Yeah, good.
Uh, there was a motion and there was a second by Councilwoman Kelly. Any other questions? Seeing none, all those in favor? Aye, any opposed? Alright. You're still on.
So I have the August report. Um, during the month of August, we processed seventy-one applications approving fifty-seven permits with a fee value of. Sixteen thousand, four hundred and seven dollars and fifty cents. There were five permit fees, double for starting work without a permit. For fines of one thousand, seven hundred and sixty-eight dollars and fifty cents. Income for permits and fines was eighteen thousand, one hundred and seventy-five dollars and fifty cents. There were forty site visits. The usual concrete, food, correspondence, final inspections for occupancy. Um, we performed five sale inspections, eight rental inspections. Three rental re-inspections and five transfer re-inspections. Total income for the month of August was nineteen thousand, uh, eight hundred and fifty dollars and fifty cents. Um, my favorite line of the report is, I have no idea why they are waiting, what they are waiting for at one oh nine Schizler Avenue. It appears to be ready to be sold?
Actually, uh, the September report.
Oh, I was gonna ask you guys if you wanted me to read it, but I literally.
No, I mean, it's it's actually done, we did a final inspection on it, and I do, it was ready, and I do believe it went to settlement.
Uh, very good, finally. I'll compliment Mr. Tartaglia because I got an email from him this morning with the September report, boom. It's October first, and he's got it right away.
What else? Um, pool inspections have been completed for the year, those persons did not respond to their notifications. Um, will receive citations. Uh, let's see, still no contact with anyone at West Wayne. It's interesting, um.
What was it, no contact with what?
Anyone at the West Wayne property, although, um, in August, there was, um, it was noticed that a rear door was open and Cleaver was there to secure the property the following day.
Is that the one where the fire was?
Yes.
Ah, okay.
Um, in August, we did not have any hearings in District Court. And we're continuing for the gas station, and that is the gist of what happened in August. I will not be here at the council meeting, um, in two weeks, I have a work obligation.
Okay.
I could read the September report if you like, or I could pass it on to somebody to read.
We'll do it in two weeks. Thank you very much, any question for the Councilwoman?
Is there a date for pool to be closed?
We do not have a date in our.
They they can stay open as long as they want, if they're willing to run their pump all the time and circulate the water in the cold weather, which we have some of my customers, keep them open as long as they can, especially if they have a heater in the spa, yeah.
True, that if you dump it, that your pool will freeze up? That you should keep watering and keep it going?
Yeah, yeah, no, we, you never drain a pool in the winter time unless you take the hydrostatic valves out of the bottom, because it could, yeah. You're talking, a average pool has about two hundred thousand pounds of weight holding it in the ground. So that helps, and they will float like a boat, I don't know if people remember, but I don't know if they've done it in a while, but there used to be a contest among the engineering schools with concrete boats down the Skookle River to see who could let go the fastest and and last the longest.
Concrete boats.
Yeah. Yep.
That's a riot.
Any other questions? I have some too for the Mr. Tartaglia, did I notice a stop-work order for the roofing at two oh five East Magnolia?
Yes, you did.
Okay. Uh, secondly, what is going on with the gas station? They started, they stopped, they came back and did a lot of work, and then the gritment's sitting there and nothing's happening. Could you give us, what's that, what's? Do they have all their permits to do the work?
Whatever they need to do, they they put in the concrete, they stopped. Um, the one gentleman, Dave, who ha- has been something of a roadblock in this whole process, so, uh, I got a phone call from him that the owner of the property was objecting to replacing all the concrete. Well, it it all got marked, I mean, we'd come back and paint it again, but suffice it to say, there's nothing on there that can be saved. I offered to meet with him there, because the concrete goes from the blacktop parking area all the way out to the curb, and as we know, it's, that's not necessary. Uh, you can have a two-foot strip between the curb and a sidewalk, as long as you maintain a minimum four-foot sidewalk. Um, but he declined, he just said, you know, the owner's walking and spending all that money for a sidewalk, I said, well, okay. The gas station stays closed, I don't look tight.
Okay. Because that that property was probably thirty-five years ago when it got renovated, and it hasn't really been touched since then.
No, it hasn't. But the sidewalk really do need, all the way around, they really do need.
Yeah. Okay, I appreciate the update, thank you, any other questions? Seeing them, moving on to finance, Councilwoman Smythe.
Thank you, Mr. President. I make a motion to approve the three-year contract with G2 for IT support at a cost not exceed, not to exceed one hundred, one hundred twenty, twenty thousand. I can't read, one hundred twenty thousand dollars upon solicitor's approval.
There's a motion on the floor to approve a three-year contract with GoTo for IT support at a cost not to exceed hundred twenty thousand upon the solicitor's approval, is there a second to that motion? Councilman Boarders, we discussed this earlier in the mayor's report, does anybody have any other questions about it?
If it passes, does the next motion become?
Correct.
Yes. Yes, the the, when, when this meeting was scheduled two weeks ago, there was just not the finalization of that information when it had to be posted, so it was either stick with it and pay seven grand or eight thousand to do the update on the computers, or renew, and that's basically folded into the cost of we just, we just talked about. Any other questions? Seeing none, all those in favor? Any opposed, the ayes have it. Councilwoman Smythe, you're still on the board, the the second motion is moot, because we decide it was an either-or situation.
The reserve account balance is reconciled as of August thirty-first, twenty twenty-five. General reserve is twenty-four thousand eighty-five dollars and fifty-three cents. So reserve was three hundred twenty-two thousand six hundred ninety-nine dollars and seventy-one cents. Police capital reserve was fifteen thousand three hundred ninety-seven dollars and eighty-five cents. Line one is one hundred sixteen thousand eight hundred forty-two dollars and eighty-five cents, and line two is nine thousand, ninety-five thousand two hundred forty-five dollars and seventy-five cents. And that concludes my report.
Thank you very much, is there any questions for the Councilwoman?
Um, there's a random comment from Zoom.
Okay.
Ms. Atchison wants to report that, uh, they still do have concrete.
I see that that's our Chair of the Civil Service Commission, an engineer, Jennifer Atchison.
An associate professor at Rexel.
Rexel University.
Yeah, 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 I think Rexel still has it, uh, you know, the driving boat races, but I think, and, uh, we're to discontinue the program in favor of, uh, their race car program.
Ah, okay. Thank you very much to our random comment. Uh, they seem no other questions, we'll move on to reports of the Boards of Commission, the zoning hearing board. We have nothing, you requested our zoning hearing board solicitor, Mr. Tartaglia, we have a hearing coming up potentially, or was that for some other purpose?
Potentially, we have to, uh, the reason I asked who our solicitor for zoning was to be able to forward the information to him. Um, that's a result of a conference we had with the Cubs on Woodlawn Avenue after it was from Judge Dorrin, uh, on the twenty-fourth.
What what address is that?
Twenty-three South Woodlawn Avenue.
Okay.
So, they were given the time uh, to apply for, and that, and they have completed the document taking to apply for zoning permits, because of the structures that they have built in their backyard. So, they would, they need to go in front of the board first to see whether or not they're permitted to have them. And then if they are permitted to have some number of them, which ones and which ones will have to be removed.
Okay, thank you very much for that. Uh, Planning Commission.
Discuss our next steps with the residential conservation overlay. So we have homework assignments for that, and we are working to head in the, in in new directions. Get stuff done.
Okay.
Alright.
Thank you very much, appreciate it. Uh, Recreation, and your meeting is gonna be next Thursday.
Yeah.
The ninth here in this building. Yeah, uh, Councilman Walker, anything from the Rec Board, and you're meeting on Monday?
Yes, the Rec Board will be meeting on Monday the sixth at seven o'clock here, uh, we'll be actually now discussing two topics, it was only going to be one. Uh, the main topic will be, be, as you saw in the newsletter, the Chili Cookoff, uh, Fall Fest, which will be on November fifteenth. Uh, ironing out the details, getting everything ready for that. Uh, and the second one that it actually was brought up to me yesterday, uh, the Swim Club is looking to have a drive-in movie in October. Uh, and it's not necessarily looking to partner with the Rec Board, but just letting us know they're working at logistics with Trilogy Entertainment, and, uh, something that would be really great to have if they can get it worked out logistically, and the Rec Board, you know, uh, hopefully would be willing to uh, help at least land with traffic and parking at the pool. Because, you know, as you have a drive-in movie, you have to have spots strategically placed out.
What date is that?
Are the logistics. Sometime in October, they're shooting for the eighteenth, but they have to, their movie rights are causing a challenge.
Just be sure that the chief is made aware, because I'm sure that will create a traffic situation potentially.
The Rec Board is not heading it.
I know.
But we might help them, so the Adrian Cox is the one that is, uh, can be taking charge.
Okay.
So anybody that wants to come to the Rec Board on Monday night, feel free.
Any questions, seeing none, Historical Commission, Ms. Kostick.
Not too much to report right now, we did in the flyer, uh, advertise that we kind of reactivated ourselves. We have received some interest about people joining and some questions about, you know, their residence or streets, on what we can do. We're still in the works, we're planning to set, have set dates to meet at the museum monthly. And that's kind of on the top, we're hoping to get that all by the end of the year.
Now, we'll publish it along with all the other boards and commissions at the beginning of, at the end of this year, actually, as it goes on, okay? Any questions, seeing none, Civil Service Commission, I will alert council, they are in the final phase of their proposed ordinance changes. Their meeting next Wednesday at seven thirty in this building is gonna be Zoomed. You're welcome to attend and ask questions about the changes that are going to be proposed to us. You can watch on Zoom, and I'm asking that the archive so that you can look at it, because essentially, they're gonna bring it to us on the fifteenth in a presentation, and we're gonna, we cannot change anything in it, it's either voted up or voted down for, uh, being advertised to be, to be passed, is that the proper procedure? They're gonna bring it to us on the fifteenth. And we have to take it the way they give it to us. And then we would authorize advertising if we decide we like it, and then send it to you for review and make sure that it matches. Because they haven't finalized until the eighth.
Right, right, uh, yes, that sounds correct.
Okay, so that's the plan, so that they will actually have, hopefully by November, we'll be able to, to have the ordinance advertised and ready for passage, and the change is being made with a lot of good work by the, by the members of.
So are we making a motion to advertise on October fifteenth, or are we gonna do it November fifth?
October eighth.
No, we're gonna make a motion on the fifteenth to advertise, uh, for one of the November meetings, not sure which one yet. So.
Dan, I missed the first part of it, what's this concerning?
This is concerned, Civil Service Commission, they're redoing our ordinance, which hasn't been touched in probably, Chief, when did the, when did the academy start? Like in the, in the seventies? And it included a lot of things about patrol, um, sixth rank, fifth rank, fourth rank, which all is moot, because that you now have to have, uh, Act one twenty clearance from the academy in order to be a member uh, of a police department, so this is, the civil service ordinance is gonna be presented to us.
Just the civil.
Yes, that's correct, and is there gonna be a, a number of changes? And I said, the meeting on Wednesday next week will allow you to ask questions before they finalize it. And then they will come and make a presentation officially to council on the fifteenth. And then we'll, if we like what we hear, we'll, uh, we'll vote to advertise it and send it to our solicitor for any changes that might need to be made, so it's probably gonna be the eighteenth of whenever our meeting date, the second one in November would probably be the more likely one.
Okay. Zoom be sent to our email or be posted on the website?
It, I've asked the mayor to, to do it and post it on the website, he could send an email to you, oh, so the, you, once he's got that set up.
Something we should look at.
Yeah. Councilwoman Blunt.
Um, this is probably a question that we can't fully answer, right, maybe Mr. Cole, I can help. Uh, AI, taking notes in a Zoom meeting, that you can then summarize. Um, what are, what is the legality of something like that, as an example? For someone who's potentially gonna miss a meeting, that zoomed in, if the AI notes are turned on, that you could put in like the Gemini, please summarize this meeting to get a book, pretty good bullet point recap of it, rather than sitting through and watching the full two hours of a meeting, um, is that permissible?
It's a public meeting, I don't think, I mean, anyone can do anything with something that's out in public.
Is that, is that for your personal use, if you were doing it for review for yourself as an example, correct? Yeah, I, I, that wouldn't be illegal to do.
Trying to make sure, I mean, so I, I do know that there's, we're just starting to get into using the, the AI note-taking and summaries and things like that in our work, and there are some stipulations around, like, yes, you can use it, but it's only if it's this type of a meeting or that type of a meeting.
Because that could have proprietary data and stuff, yeah.
Something, something like that, so I just wanted to kind of pose that as a thing, number one, can we do it? Which then would be logistically moving forward potentially, how do we set that up?
I think it's probably just a matter of clicking on Zoom, we would just click on AI.
We shouldn't be using this for, to keep the minutes.
Correct.
No, you know. But like, in, as a recap for a meeting, like if a meeting was missed and you wanted to.
It wouldn't be in place of the minutes, but it could be a source of, of notes, of summary.
And in fact, if you want. You know, that, that, I, I'm less comfortable saying is, is, is A okay, it might be fine, but I don't, I that, that's gonna take an extra level of research.
But doesn't that come up at the beginning of every Zoom meeting?
But it has to be enabled, right?
I'm saying, but that question now seems to come up.
So, so, so this is my unfamiliarity of, of what it looks like on, on that end, and what it looks like to enable this sort of thing.
But there's something you can check to see if we can do it. Thank you.
Alright, yeah, yeah.
Right, the same kind of
Right.
Minutes.
Like transcription minutes, yeah.
Meetings.
Right.
So, it just, it would be.
They actually become kind of official if it's on the borough.
Oh, yeah, absolutely, I think.
They're not approved by council.
I think, I think we're, we're headed, we're gonna have to come up with something in the future for that. And, you know, this is something that ever, everyone's base, it almost isn't unique to town.
But I would guess, to your original interpretation, Mr. Cole, that it would probably be, I mean, being a public meeting, we'll be, just be talking about the contents of that public meeting being shared with Zoom's AI agent, and, you know, that AI agent, you know, it would, being a public meeting. Why are you shaking your head? Because it's their interpret, the AI's interpretation of what went on, and it's not the minutes that we approved. Right. Not what's on Zoom directly, so I think that that, my personal opinion is, we're not doing that until we get a total clearance. Okay. Legally speaking. I understand. I, I always thought. I want to note that your computer just died, and yet again, this is the microphone, so what is the timeline for getting this replaced?
I will look into it.
Yeah, it's, yeah, thank you.
What about if we put a disclaimer in front of the?
The solicitor will have to look into it and see what, what's legal, not legal, uh, my gut is telling me that that because it interprets in those things.
From really messed up.
Yeah.
That it, it doesn't know who said what, and it didn't get the right words, I mean, it's definitely not an official, official record.
But maybe we could have it just as, with a disclaimer, that this is generated by an AI agent.
We will let the solicitor. We will let the solicitor figure out what the legal.
Yep.
Thank you for bringing it up.
And I just, I have a feeling this is the kind of thing like we're going to, my office is going to have to sit down and come up with.
Uh, some kind of.
Cause it's coming.
Yeah. It's not coming. It's here.
Uh.
Six-week course.
Oh.
Lovely.
It's amazing.
Thank you. All right. So you're all on alert about the meeting next, uh, Wednesday and it'll be posted on the website. Uh, probably making special note that the Civil Service Commission is, uh, what's on there. Okay, good. That's, I have something to do, guys. Uh, our chairman just was alerting us to.
Chair of Civil Service.
Of Civil Service Commission that, uh, I requested that the solicitor for them list, this is what the current ordinance is. These are all the changes and why. And apparently they've done that. I presume, John, that you sent her a, a digital version of the police contract? She was requesting that.
Whoever requested, I sent it out. Who was looking for it?
It's Jennifer Anderson.
And I sent it to you, Mike.
Yeah, I think you requested it. I'll, I'll double check that they, they have.
I sent it out to whoever requested.
Okay.
I don't think I did. Possible.
Yeah, I, I asked you to get it to her. She may have asked it from you.
And maybe I did. I sent it to whoever requests.
All right. So you're all alert on that. Uh, Shaitree Advisory Committee, we discussed earlier.
I always think it's.
Uh, unfinished business. We will have an executive session for legal matters.
Why?
Upcoming meetings held in the John P. McLean Community Center, as I mentioned.
We can talk tomorrow.
Civil Service, October eighth. Planning Commission, Thursday, October ninth. Council meeting will be Wednesday, October fifteenth. Shaitree Advisory is Tuesday, October twenty-first, and then we have our caucus meeting on November fifth. And the rec board is meeting.
That.
Monday.
We, we are meeting on the tenth. However, this upcoming Monday is just more of a planning meeting.
So it's an extra one. Okay.
It's an extra one.
Yeah, you had me checking my calendar.
That's the sixth, right?
Okay.
That's for planning of the chili cook-off. Privileges on the floor, anyone? Seeing none? Uh, yes, I will ask since he's been here. Chief, you have anything else to report to us since this is combination council caucus meeting?
Uh, no.
He's ready to go. It's been two hours.
How is the transition into the new Department of Police Department going over there?
It's going well. It's, 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 it's going well. It's, uh, it's a welcome.
Okay.
We still need a little bit of furniture.
Yeah, we need some furniture.
Chairs would be nice.
Chief, why do you have these crazy little tiny windows? Is that, is that because?
What's that?
Do you have these little? Yeah.
Esthetically.
Well, that was a state police thing. I think that was security.
Was that a security thing?
I had some sunlight come through today.
Guy.
Hi.
You ever look on the Clifton side, you look at his windows, little slits.
We are about to go in the executive session. I asked Mr. Tartaglia to stay because he's one of the primary people for this.
And Mr. Burns.
And Mr. Burn. Oh, he's also involved. Okay, very good. Uh, I will entertain a motion to adjourn the meeting. Mr. Borders, is there a second to that? Mr. Walker, all those in favor? Aye, all those opposed. Thank you all very much and we'll reconvene for executive session with a couple of minutes. You can stretch your legs. I'll take this back.
I'm going that way, damn you.
That's what I need.
John, me too. That's. Have your answer. Yes, um. Write a memorandum of all the efforts you took.
Mr. President, did you ask him to turn off the meeting? Can you ask? Yeah, good.
It's actually says, maybe we'll have to request this prequels, not in seat prequels, right?
Got it. So.